Good morning. I want to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's Wednesday, August 28, 2024, and I will note for the record that all three commissioners are present here in the Nat U Hill Room. We'll begin with our public statement, read by Commissioner Jones, please.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
All right. Thank you so much. We will now move on to our department updates.
Do we want to amend the agenda?
Oh, thank you. I put a big blue note there, and I missed it. Thank you. We do have an additional agenda item, please.
I wish to amend the agenda to add item M, which is to amend the contract with Bluestone Tree, Inc. This will be the fund name is County General, Emergency Management Fund Number 1,000, in an amount not to exceed for the total project $500,000. And I'll let people know that this is for all the tree cleanup from the bad storm we had.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adding item M signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Thank you for reminding me. Next, we have department updates. First, we have an update from Ms. Kelly at the Health Department.
Good morning, Commissioners. Wastewater concentrations of COVID have slightly increased compared to last week, but we have not had any reported changes in hospital admissions or emergency department visits. I'd like to provide an update for the Futures Family Planning Services. These are being transferred to the Indiana Family Health Council, who can be reached at 317-363-8613. The Health Department is still offering STI and HIV testing, treatment, counseling, education, and referral services. You can call 812-349-2829 for more information on those services. And we do expect the updated COVID-19 vaccines to arrive at the public health clinic next week.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
And so this vaccine is not a combined COVID flu vaccine, correct? It's just COVID vaccine?
Yes, and the formulary this year is targeted to JN1, which is the most recent Omicron variant.
Great. Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate the update. And next, we have point of privilege. We're going to hear from Lisa Marie Napoli from the Monroe County Health Equity Council. We have others joining us today, too. And her s-
Is that okay?
Yes, great.
And they're spiffy, spiffy t-shirts.
Right.
Showing the back to the camera.
Wilson is going to present. Wilson Mosley?
Hello, everyone. My name is Wilson Mosley, and I work for the Community Justice and Mediation Center. And I'm the vice president, and I am happy to tell you about the wonderful achievements that we were able to achieve in Colorado this summer. So what we did-
A few photos?
A few photos, yeah.
Were we able to get the photos?
I was not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
They didn't go through. Sorry. Go along. Keep going. I'll keep looking.
Well, no worries. I can go ahead and keep introducing. So in Colorado, we went to the All American City Conference, where this was the 75th Annual, and we competed with 100 cities across the US to see what national achievements have we made in the community to make it better, more cohesive, and more civic in their engagement. So when we went, we presented a lot of our community projects. One of them was Community Voices for Health Project. What was the other two?
Could I jump in?
Yeah, you can jump in.
So they were all county-based projects with the Monroe County Community Voices for Health, but we had three parts of it. One was the creation of the Monroe County Health Equity Council. That was our featured project. The next one was the dialogue and deliberation work that we did. And the last one was taking this model that's been very successful and scaling it up to share with partners around, with others around the state through a Partners Council initiative.
And this is all work in participatory governance, and we all want to increase the voices of the community and make sure that we can all work better together to make community initiatives that really reflect the vision of the community and Monroe County at large. And that's one of the things that we achieved. And when we went there, we learned so many cool things from other cities that we want to incorporate here in Monroe County. So now, we would like to present to you with this-
Can we say who's on our team?
We can't say who's on our team. I'm already written.
Just really, well, first of all, thank you to Julie Thomas, County Commissioner, who was definitely a part of the brainstorming and the planning for all this. Appreciate that. We also had the presence. We are grateful. Carrie Thompson, our mayor, was able to join us, too, in Denver. And we have Marta Hall, who, would you like to say hello? Is that okay?
I am a MECE member and was also involved in Community Voices for Health. I live in public housing, and it's been very important for me to get people's basic needs met.
And it was a community campus initiative as well?
I'm Lisa Amsler at the O'Neill School. I've been there since 1992. This was my doctoral student. This was my master's student, and I was a founding board member of C-GAM. So this work was very, very exciting for me, especially because most of it got done by everybody else.
So I'd like to add, the National Civic League is a highly esteemed organization. It's 125 years old. It began with Theodore Roosevelt, Brandeis, and others. So it's a very big recognition. We're honored. I should probably mention, I'm with the Political and Civic Engagement Program. This was a big part of our, one of our community engagement projects, and I've been a volunteer with C-GAM for 25 years. So we are excited to present this plaque to the county. It's a beautiful one to display the county work and the recognition we received. So anything else?
No. Thank you for all the work, and I'm looking forward to all the wonderful community projects we'll do in the future.
Yes.
Thank you all.
And I just got the slides, so I will find a way to upload them somewhere. So thank you. I'm so sorry.
But I'd also like to point out that every other community that was there, it was the city, that Monroe County was the only county at this huge celebration.
Yeah. We're gonna go stand with them?
Yeah.
Where do we go? Yeah. We're all in. Yeah. Okay.
I don't know. I'll just follow.
Here, you want to give it probably?
Sure. Got it.
Thank you. You're welcome.
And the County Health Department was involved, too. Don't want to forget that. Thank you all. Okay. Thank you all for being here. It was very exciting, and we have more work to do. We're looking at creating a community conversation with health providers in October, so stay tuned for that information. I did want to just provide a brief update on site location for the jail facility. Obviously, a site has not been selected yet for the justice facility, sorry. And we, the review of the site has not yet been completed, so we hope to have that information soon to share with the public and with our county colleagues. And did you have something else you wanted to add?
Well, yes. I mean, we've been hearing from a lot of constituents that the issue of the jail and the Justice Department should have been attacked, addressed, whatever, 15 years ago. None of us were in office as commissioners at that time, but right now, I feel like what's important is that the county council take on the task of passing a jail tax so that we can move forward. The location, passing the tax is not dependent upon the location, and the sooner we can get that jail tax passed, the quicker we can move forward. If we have to wait 10 months or a year additional to bond, we know that this is going to cost millions more to the county taxpayers, and I think that's irresponsible. But, so I would just like to ask the county council to move forward on this.
All right. Thank you so much. Anything else for department updates? We do have Ms. Nestor Jellin on line.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'd like to go ahead and provide an update for the County Development Ordinance. Going to share my screen briefly. So our County Development Ordinance is moving forward. We have a public hearing scheduled for September 24 at 5:30 PM in the Nat U Hill Room. On our website, monroe cdo.com, we do have some updates for the public. So under Useful Links, we do have the latest draft of the CDO. This is being consistently updated, so when you go to that website here, you can click on the latest draft. We've also added a CDO feedback survey. It's a really quick survey for folks that can't make it to the hearing or if they wish to provide their comments in writing. And then we also have tutorial videos on how to use the CDO. So these are all updated bits of information. We sent out over 39,000 postcards, statutory requirement that we do so, and so we've been fielding a lot of calls in the office, but I just want to remind people best to contact us ahead of time before September 24, should you have questions. We will have people available at the hearing to field your questions, but it will be significantly easier to come to us before September 24 with questions so that you can come on September 24 with comments. So our office is open Monday through Friday, 8 to 4 PM. We're located in the North Showers Building, Suite 224 at the Government Center. We also have Planner of the Day schedules every day. Planners are here to help you if you want to just call us or walk into our office or email us. So our phone number here is 812-349-2560. Our email address is planningoffice@cdo.munro.in.us. And like I said, you can also visit our website and submit feedback in writing. So we do hope to hear from people. We've been keeping up with the calls and emails that are coming in and trying to address everyone's questions accordingly. We know it's a big document, and we want to help people to understand it and also provide comment. So I'll take any questions that you have.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, just that I'm glad this is moving along quickly now.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes, I look forward to hearing people, what people have to say on the 24th.
That'll be really useful. Thank you so much, and thank you to staff for all their hard work. I know they're putting in a lot of time to get this document right and to answer people's questions as they come up. And I've heard only great things, so thank you so much. All right. With that, we will move on to public comment. Public comment is for items not on the agenda, limited to three minutes per person. You may raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. We do have one. I cannot see the names, so TSD, if you would promote them. Please give us your name and county of residence. You're still muted? Well, I would encourage this person to contact us via email with their question or return next week. It's, they're unable to unmute, so. All right. Okay. Seeing no other public comment, we will go ahead and move on to our next agenda item, please.
Yes, move approval of the minutes from August 14, 2024, and from the August 21, 2024 Works Session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, corrections, or edits?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes for August 14, 2024, and August 21, 2024 Works Session summary signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Yes, move approval of Claim Stockit Accounts Payable, August 28, 2024, and Payroll for August 23, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Ms. Miller joining us from the Auditor's Office. Good morning.
Good morning. The Accounts Payable Claim Stockit for August 28, 2024 totals $13,79,559.45. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments. The Payroll Docket for August 23, 2024 includes $1,527,440.95 in direct costs and the remaining $651,324.05 were for indirect costs, for a grand total of $2,178,765.
All right. Thank you so much. Any comments or questions from the board? Commissioner Githens?
Well, I looked at these claims two different times, and so I don't know if something changed from last Thursday, but from what I could calculate on Thursday, we were approved their claims for over $23,000, again, for some repairs to the justice building. And this just continues to be a black hole, almost, for county funds, and this is another reason to move forward, in my mind, for a new jail and a new justice campus. I will say that there's a lot of lit transfer that went on in these claims, and there were a couple of rural housing repair projects taken care of through the claims, too, which made my heart feel really good.
Yeah, that's really good news. Any comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Claim Stockit Accounts Payable, August 28, 2024, and Payroll, August 23, 2024, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. We have received a report from the Clerk of the Circuit Court, and that report is from July of 2024, and we'll move on to new business, please.
Yes. Move approval of an agreement with DLZ for the survey of North Park. Fund name, edit ban, fund number 4816, in an amount of $74,000.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Purdy?
Good morning. Excuse me. This is, as you have indicated, there has not been any decisions actually made on the purchase of property. However, this is a necessary component of if we should need to purchase the North Park property, we have to have an accurate survey. So this is providing that information to the county and in no way affects our continued look at Vernal Pike, but it does also ensure that we are not losing time by looking elsewhere. So that's what this is.
Great. Thank you. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
I just, please, we're moving ahead.
Commissioner Githens?
I concur with my colleague that, yes, this is the next step forward.
Absolutely. It was information we have to have, for sure. All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Claim Stockit Accounts Payable, August 28, 2024, and Payroll, August 23, 2024, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. We have received a report from the Clerk of the Circuit Court, and that report is from July of 2024, and we'll move on to new business, please.
Yes. Move approval of an agreement with DLZ for the survey of North Park. Fund name, edit ban, fund number 4816, in an amount of $74,000.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Purdy?
Good morning. Excuse me. This is, as you have indicated, there has not been any decisions actually made on the purchase of property. However, this is a necessary component of if we should need to purchase the North Park property, we have to have an accurate survey. So this is providing that information to the county and in no way affects our continued look at Vernal Pike, but it does also ensure that we are not losing time by looking elsewhere. So that's what this is.
Great. Thank you. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
I just, please, we're moving ahead.
Commissioner Githens?
I concur with my colleague that, yes, this is the next step forward.
Absolutely. It was information we have to have, for sure. All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving AVI Systems, Inc., and Matrix Integration Proposals for Courtroom 205 Audio Systems Retooling. Fund names, 2023 GO Bond and Cumulative Capital. Fund numbers, 4817 and 1138, in an amount of $29,268.68.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Mr. Cron. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Eric Cron, TSD Office. So we're all aware, but the public may not be, our courtrooms use a recording system and a microphone system to transcribe all the, or to record all the court hearings, so the days of a stenographer setting in a courtroom typing out things in shorthand don't exist. So the system in place in all of our courtrooms is in excess of 20 years old. I don't have an exact date when they were installed, but I know they were in place when I started as a tech in 2004, so I can at least count for 20 years of service out of that hardware, during which time we've had to put many hours in keeping those systems going, particularly over the last five years as all those hardware components have aged and degraded. So the previous director, Eric Evans, had put in some repairs where he could with updated mixers, but it's still not adequate enough to meet the needs, and we're running into issues as the recording quality in all the rooms is poor enough that it's hard for the court reporters to then transcribe those court hearings into usable forms that they can then send out to the attorneys. So all 11 courtrooms are affected under this, but what we were looking to do is take the worst of the courtrooms, which is Courtroom 205, and have it redone as a proof of concept. That way, we can go through, make sure it meets the needs, have the Board of Judges then look at it and make sure that they're happy with it before we make the substantial investment of looking at the other courtrooms. I did reach out to three different contractors here in the state, trying to keep it local because of the support component. When it goes down, you need somebody here fast. So we did take in three different quotes. AVI Systems out of Columbus had the most reasonable quote while providing the best level of service as far as response time. They can be on onsite or on a remote call within 30 minutes. They can be here within a couple of hours from Columbus then to have to support if they have to come onsite. So with that is a second half to this, where we have to have network cabling put in place. These are updated systems similar to what we have here in the Nat U Hill Room with the wireless microphones, and it has to have a control system for that. So this request is to approve the AVI Systems portion of this. This includes wireless microphones, all the security cabinets to lock up the hardware because the controls will not be accessible by court staff. That will all be managed by TSD. So this is for $27,830.74 to replace all the audio hardware inside Courtroom 205. Then there's the additional opponent of $1,437.94 for Matrix to put in that network cabling.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yes. Should the council decide that we will move the Justice Center to a new location, can any of this equipment be moved and reused?
Absolutely. Every bit of it can be taken out. These are all wireless microphone arrays. We're getting away from the old hardwired systems, so every bit of this can be removed and relocated and put in place pretty quickly, actually.
Thank you.
Great. Commissioner Githens?
Yeah, in fact, it looked like, from the pictures that you included, that they're exactly the same kind of setup that we're using here today.
It is. It's a more scaled-down version. Obviously, what we have going on here in the Nat U Hill Room is more complex because of cats and other things, feeds we have going out, but it is the same basic shore wireless microphone system. With the construction of the courtrooms, we get a lot of interference, not only because of the old cabling, but all your lighting creates magnetic interference, all your HVAC that's running through those ceilings does the same thing. So you get constant white noise and static created by those systems. We know this wireless system will alleviate that problem.
Great. Thank you. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving AVI Systems, Inc., and Matrix Integration Proposals for Courtroom 205 Audio System Retooling, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item?
Yes, move approval of Toshiba Single Copier 60-Month Agreement for the Surveyors' Office. Fund name, cumulative capital, fund number 1138, in an amount of $3,614.28. Does that include that extra dollar I asked you about?
It does.
Okay. We have a motion, and we have a second. Mr. Cron?
Yes. The copier that's currently in place in the Surveyors' Office was purchased 10 years ago. It was one that we purchased through our normal electronics vendor. It's not a Ricoh Business Class machine. It was an HP-style machine. Recently, it started having real print quality issues, which is a problem for our GIS and everything else they're trying to do the high-res pictures with. So our vendor that we used to do all our small copier repairs made repeated attempts to repair this unit. The next repair for it, to try to address this quality issue, image quality issue, the parts are older, the machine's old enough now that the parts are expensive enough that it's not cost-effective to take that next step to try to replace this. So I'm looking to get them a Toshiba unit, standard to what the rest of we've deployed in the county. It will meet their needs. This comes under the same agreement on the state QPA pricing as our other Toshiba copiers for 60 months, or, yes, for 60 months. Total cost of this contract with the dollar buyout at the end of the lease is $3,614.28.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
No, Mr. Cron just answered my question.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
All right. Any public comment on this item? Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Toshiba Single Copier 60-Month Agreement for the Surveyors' Office, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Approval of Monroe Tough John Service Agreement. Fund names, County General and Parks Nonreverting. Fund numbers, 1,000, 1,178, and 1,179, in an amount not to exceed $8,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Whitmer?
Yes, I'm asking the Commissioners to approve Monroe Tough John for our porta toilet servicing.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Jones? Comments or questions?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
No, I heard about this at the last park boards.
Yeah, park board meeting. We have to do this. Makes sense. Thank you for finding this agent. All right. I'll see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Monroe Tough John Service Agreement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next item, please. Thank you.
Move approval of Victims of Crime Act or VOCA Grant Agreement. Fund name, VOCA Grant, fund number 8121, and a grant amount of $154,907.76.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Hamlin from the Prosecutor's Office.
Good morning, Commissioners, can you hear me okay?
We sure can. Great.
This is a request that you've had before you many times in the past. This is a two-year contract for our Victims of Crime Act funding that we get, it's federal dollars that come through the state through Indiana Criminal Justice Institute. It pays a portion of the salary for our four victim assistants, and then it pays the largest part of a biannual training that they go to, a national training that keeps them current on victim services. Happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you so much, this is a wonderful grant. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
I just want to comment that it's a very worthwhile program, and I'm really pleased that our Prosecutor's Office participates.
Absolutely. Commissioner Jones?
I completely agree.
Yeah, it's wonderful, wonderful service, and it's great that you're receiving this money again, so important. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Victim of Crime Act VOCA Grant Agreement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Yes, move approval of the MOA with Town of Ellisville for the paid student interns. Fund name, High Tech Crimes Unit, fund number 9159, in an amount of $87,207.26.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second, Ms. Hamlin.
This is, you've already signed the contract for the High Tech Crime Unit. This is a transfer of authority. The High Tech Crime Unit was at Indiana University, and they've moved over to the Town of Ellisville. This contract just formalizes the process for hiring and paying the student interns that work with that program.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
I was actually pleased to see that student interns are part of this. I didn't realize that.
Yeah.
Right, forgotten.
Yeah. Excellent, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Memorandum of Agreement with Town of Ellisville for Paid Student Interns, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you, have a great day.
All right, next second, please.
Move approval of Ordinance 2024-34 to amend Monroe County Code, Chapter 365, Onsite Sewage Systems.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Turner King is here to assist us. Good morning.
Hi, Harry. And there are also individuals from our Health Department who's going to assist me. So this is a change to the Monroe County Code, Chapter 365 regarding onsite sewage systems. It's really just updating our code with state law. Procedurally, what would happen next is if the commissioners approve these code changes, they would be provided to a technical committee, and then after that, they could be implemented. The code section did not, we did not have to advertise because there's no changes to fees and fines. So that's the basic summary unless the Health Department would like to add some more.
If anybody would like to add anything to that from the Health Department? Okay, thank you, let's see if we do, thank you. All right, so comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No, it seemed all very straightforward to me.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I don't have any.
This is one of the situations where state law changes and we have to comply. We have another example on our agenda as well. You know, not always the best changes, but changes nonetheless, and we just have to move on. So let's see if there's any public comment on this item. We appreciate the Health Department being here as well. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill if you have questions or comments. All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving Ordinance 2024-34, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero, thank you. Next item, please.
Move approval of E&amp;B Paving LLC Change Order Number Three for Marlin Hills Subdivision. Fund name, ARPA, fund number 8950, in an amount of $2,975.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Ms. Thetonia here to tell us all about it.
Good morning, Commissioners, Kelsey Thetonia, MS 4 Coordinator with the Highway Department. This is for a small change order for the Marlin Hills project. This is for the drainage improvements where we reinstalled storm sewers in this whole subdivision. This one particular area, this intersection, had very little grade changes. And so we worked very closely with the engineer and contractor to make sure that this works. So this is a small change that will help us meet that goal of getting all the drainage where it needs to go. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, can you describe just what a rolled curb is?
Yes, so you may see two different types of curb. You may see a curb that is straight up six inches and over, and a roll curb has a gradual radius, which is easier to drive over. We often see them in subdivisions where you transition from the road to a driveway, so you can drive over it. It's part of our standards in many subdivisions, so.
This is something I very much appreciate because something that maybe a lot of people don't notice or really probably care about, box turtles are endangered. And when box turtles get onto roads with the straight-up curb, they have no way to get off of them. And so they get killed. I wish we would move to the roll curbs in general.
Commissioner Giffens?
Thank you, Commissioner Jones, for that bit of education today. But also, I'm sure that the folks that live in Marlin Hills are very appreciative of these updates.
Oh, I believe so. And I was at Dog Park yesterday and saw the construction trucks. So did all the dogs, who were very eager to go to the fence to park at the trucks. Kind of an interesting one. Anyway, but thank you for this. Is this keeping us within budget on this?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you so much. All right, excellent. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the E&amp;B Paving LLC Change Order Number Three for Marlin Hills Subdivision, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of the Reed &amp; Sons Construction, Inc. On Call Agreement for CCTV Services. Fund name, Stormwater Fund Number 1197.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Thetonia.
Hi, this is a on-call contract for televising storm sewers. We use this to respond to drainage complaints. It makes it safer for crews to address issues, so it reduces the need for confined entry, and it helps us do larger surveys of storm sewers to help planning for new repairs and preventive maintenance.
All right, thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens?
I just think this is such cool technology, I mean, absolutely amazing.
Very neat.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jones, comments or questions?
Yeah, I've seen footage of some of this, and there's a surprising amount of wildlife in those storms.
Oh, now you're gonna have to come back and show us video.
I can.
All right, excellent.
No, this is something that's awfully important, and I'm glad you're doing it.
Yeah, these blockages are, you know, sometimes cause floods, which erode our roadways and create other issues for homeowners and businesses, so it's really important to do. So thank you for bringing this to us. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Reed &amp; Sons Construction, Inc. On Call Agreement for CCTV Services, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of Professional Services Agreement with Hydrogeology, Inc. Fund name, Stormwater Fund Number 1197 again.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Thetonia.
This is an on-call agreement with Hydrogeology for consultation for karst issues that we may have. I work closely with highway crews. If we have issues with sinkholes opening up within the county right-of-way, they pose major safety concerns. So having an on-call geologist to help us with some of the more tricky situations is going to be very useful. I've also incorporated some project-based work into this contract where I can submit a proposal or a task order under this for larger surveying projects regarding sinkhole mapping.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this also, I think, is very important, I'm glad that you've done it.
Commissioner Giffens?
I want to point out that you have, while we don't have an exact amount, we do have a not-to-exceed of $40,000 in this.
All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Professional Services Agreement with Hydrology, Inc., signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero, thank you, ma'am. All right, next item, please.
Yes, move approval of Ordinance 2024-23. Amendments to Monroe County Ordinances due to House Enrolled Act Number 1108, the steep slope provision.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, and we have the Director of Planning, Ms. Nestor Jellin, joining us. Good morning again.
Good morning again. Bringing forward to you three zoning and subdivision ordinance chapters for revision. So as stated in the executive summary here, there was a passage of a state law, House Bill 1108, which prevents us, per the enacted law, it says, "A unit may not adopt or enforce an ordinance or resolution that prohibits or has the effect of prohibiting development exclusively on the basis of slope if the predevelopment slope of the site is less than 25%." I do want to note this will not impact our areas of protection around Monroe or Griffey. Those are within a watershed and specifically exempt from this requirement. So I'll go through the changes and the red line of this Commissioner's packet this morning. The first change is to Chapter 804. It's in regards to administrative waivers. Since we are not going to be seeing slopes within 15 to 24.99%, for our discretion, we're going to remove this administrative option. So if someone is proposing development on slopes 25% or greater, we believe that should go through the Board of Zoning Appeals, and there should not be an administrative waiver option. So we will strike this section of the code. The next change is in regards to our buildable area. In Chapter 804, this is similar in the subdivision code, but we're going to be updating the provision to say slopes 25% or greater, as measured as a 12-and-a-half-foot fall over a 50-foot distance, shall not be included as buildable area. And then also specifying here that areas 1 through 3 in the environmental constraints overlay have additional slope regulations as specified in 825. So technically, if someone is proposing 26% slope in an eco area, they would be subject to the eco provisions as well as the 25% slope regulation. The next change is in our Chapter 815. This is in regards to our checklist, if you will, for when you want to apply for a building permit and improvement location permit. We're asking that the public show both a 15% slope line and a 25% slope line for our evaluation. And then we're also adding in clarity to state that site plans and spot plans must comply with Chapter 761 and the Stormwater Technical Standards Manual regarding all erosion control measures. So this will just point people to the right location in the Stormwater Ordinance to pick and choose some of the best management practices for their development. The last change here is in Chapter 856. So similar to the section in 804, we also have this duplicated in the subdivision control ordinance. So as I stated before, it's just going to separate out one line of text into two lines for clarity. I can take any questions.
All right, thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Well, I appreciate the thoroughness of Ms. Jellin's work, but this is another example of the state legislature interfering with local control. Ms. Thetonia, Ms. Jellin, Commissioner Thomas, and Martha Miller and I all went up and testified against this particular bill because we have very, very unique situation in Monroe County with our karst, with our poor soils, with our rolling hills. It's not like the flat northern part of Indiana. It's not like the rich soils of, say, Jackson County and others. It's really, it was really discouraging to have folks in Indianapolis not listen to the reasons why we had this kind of an ordinance in place, especially when we took true professionals, well-trained professionals with us to give their opinions. So I'm sorry we have to do this.
Yeah. I agree. Commissioner Jones, comments, questions?
I completely agree with Commissioner Giffens. This is a truly unfortunate situation. I guess the maybe very slight silver lining is that at least we do get to keep our eco restrictions. It's really unfortunate that that doesn't apply to Lake Lemon.
Yeah, absolutely agree, this is another, it's essentially an unfunded mandate because by doing this, we're potentially increasing the costs to every ratepayer in the Stormwater District and every resident in Monroe County because we would have so much, we have more inspections to do, we have so much more work to do to try to deal with the outcome of this legislation. But it's something, again, we have to do. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving Ordinance 2024-23, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item, please.
Yes, this is a really joyful one, so I'm really honored to get to make this motion. Move that we approve the CARES Board dispersment of checks to grantees for the year 2024. And this is fund name, Drug-Free Community, fund number 1148-0000. Total grant amount of $41,901.99.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, Mr. Malone. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, thank you. This year, we had $41,901.99 to allocate to grantees here in the county. 14% of our operating cost this year is what $6,000 was going to go for. Each of the categories had $11,967.33, which is 28%, 3% above what we're required to do as far as the grant is concerned, or the grants, our grant money is concerned. The CARES Board is a local coordinating council for the LCC for Monroe County and the Monroe County Commissioners. Each county has an LCC in the state of Indiana. These councils were established by executive order under Governor By as part of the Drug-Free Indiana Mission to support and promote local efforts to prevent and reduce harmful involvement programs and initiatives in Monroe County. The process begins with a community assessment by the CARES Board. We collect data and input about what is happening here. This assessment provides framework for our community plan, which lists objectives and/or steps that could be taken to reduce community drug and alcohol uses here, or issues here in Monroe County. The plan is then sent to the state for approval. Once the approved, it's approved by the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute, the grant process proceeds, go to the council for appropriation, then we come to you for the dispersment of checks. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Purdy, you have the list of recipients?
I do, and...
Read them off if you want me to. Read them off if you want me to.
You're welcome to do that. Now, what I would like to say is if everybody's in agreement is to name the people who are receiving the grants, have them all come up, we'll get a picture of them, and then you need to go downstairs to the auditor's office to sign the granting agreement and to get your check. Does that sound good?
That's good.
I'm here for three of them.
Okay. All righty, so do you want me to do yours?
That's fine.
Okay. So Mr. Malone is going to be receiving checks for the Monroe County Drug Treatment Court in the sum of $1,600. I presume you're also here for the probation department, community corrections, and the alcohol tests.
Correct.
And the sum of $750.
I'm here for the CARES Board.
And you're here for the CARES Board, which is the $6,000.
Yes, I just want to make a comment regarding the Drug Treatment Court grant. This will allow us to provide free urine screens to our participants in the problem-solving courts as far as instant cups is concerned, which is a huge, huge, huge step in the process of helping them through these programs as well. So it will provide free urine screens for them as we move forward. So thank you.
The rest are yours. The rest were yours, you want to announce the rest?
Oh, yeah, I can.
I will say that there's been a change in the leadership at New Leaf New Life, that the current new executive director is Stacy Flynn.
Okay. Thank you. So it's no longer Jordan, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so New Leaf New Life for their program inside the jail will receive $4,370.33 and then their programs for outside the jail will be receiving $4,224.33. These are all, I believe, in the treatment category. Amethyst House will be receiving, for their men's program, will be receiving $4,150. And in the women's program, Amethyst House will be receiving $4,150.33. Courage to Change, I believe Marilyn's here for Courage to Change, they'll be receiving $4,100 for their housing and staffing. Beacon with Forrest Gilmore will be receiving for the Crawford Homes program, $4,200. The IRA, Indiana Recovery Alliance, for ATOD funds, $4,000 during $60. And then Big Brothers, Big Sisters will be receiving $4,150 in grant money. It's not nearly enough and we keep seeing the amount dwindle year in, year out. So we, as the board, take this very seriously as far as how we allocate. We want to make sure everybody gets something and the matrix that we use seems to get more and more complicated every year, but we try to keep our staffing costs, as far as the board is concerned, down to a minimum where we could get 25, we keep it down to about 12 or 14% each year and we try to allocate close to 80% to all the other programs that are in the county. So, thank you.
Are there other...
I know Marilyn's here. I don't know.
I know.
Big Brothers, Big Sisters. And Beacon, come on down.
Awesome. And then...
Mark Delong was here for Amethyst. He had to leave to go back for a meeting. Do you want all of us?
Yeah.
Let's get it for him.
Thank you all for your work.
Really appreciate you.
I'll send this to you.
All right, thank you.
Anybody want to make any comments? When we come back here, anybody want to make any comments on this?
We still have to vote, right?
We have still to vote.
Yeah. I, like Mr. Malone, I really wish that there were more funding here because each of these organizations does so much to help members of our community, whether it's children, whether it's adults in recovery, whether it's people going through court system. Yes, this fabulous program. And Mr. Malone himself has been affiliated with the court system for decades. I don't want to embarrass him, but he's been there for a while.
Wow. Commissioner Jones, anything you want to add?
No, I think Commissioner Giffens covered it quite well. Thank you.
And, yeah, these agencies all do great work and necessary work in our community and we wish there were more money. That's always an issue. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the CARES Board dispersment of checks to grantees for 2024 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. And yes, we have an item M.
Yes, this is a motion to amend our contract with Bluestone Tree, Inc. Fund name County General Emergency Management. Fund number 1,000. And a total amount not to exceed $500,000.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, Ms. Purdy.
Yeah, thank you. This is just to allow us to pay Bluestone for their services that they have been doing and I believe are continuing to do throughout our community regarding the storm damage that was incurred. Council had appropriated up to $500,000 and our last contract had indicated not to exceed 130, so we're now wanting to just make sure that we have sufficient funds to pay our bills and this one brings it up to a not to exceed 500,000. That's it.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
We're hoping to get reimbursed from FEMA for this, is that correct?
We are hoping to get reimbursed. We should get at least, oh, I should not say, I want to say 15% if it's from the state, but it's more than that if we meet certain criteria for FEMA. We will get some reimbursement.
Last week, when I was at the Parks Board meeting, they were asking some of the staff about cleanup and at that time, one of the staff members said that Bluestone had 240 people waiting for help from them.
Wow.
And as a result of the huge storm and then other things that happened.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I'm just pretty amazed by the extent of damage that was done and really, an awful lot of people did their own cleanup. So this is not, what we're seeing here isn't the full extent.
No, that's very true. No, that's a really good point. Yeah, excellent. All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the amended contract with Bluestone signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. We don't have any appointments today. We are continuing to invite applicants for our boards and commissions and we specifically do have an opening on the redevelopment commission, so please go to co.monroe.in.us to apply. We are, the county government is closed on Monday for Labor Day. Thank you to all the workers in our community who make everything function so well. There are some upcoming events. There's a Vote Center public discussion on September 11th at 6:00 PM at Unionville Elementary School. On September 16th, 6:00 to 7:30 PM, the Capital Improvement Board is hosting a community info and input session at the Convention Center. Again, that's September 16th, 6:00 to 7:30 PM. And September 24th, as we heard earlier, the CDO public hearing will be held 5:30 start time here at the Nat U Hill Room. Go to monroe.cdo.com for more information. There are blood drives. There's one today from 1:00 to 6:00, Thursday, August 29th from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, September 5th and September 6th as well. These are held at IB Tech Shreve Hall and we are working with the Red Cross and IB Tech to make this happen. So we do encourage residents to sign up for the Resident Alert Notification System. Go to co.monroe.in.us and click on the megaphone. We also continue to offer rural housing repairs for low and moderate income Monroe County homeowners. These are for owner occupied homes outside the city and town of Ellisville, outside the city of Bloomington, town of Ellisville, where repairs, basic repairs are needed for the homes, but folks cannot afford them. And we ask residents who need these repairs to contact their township trustee. For residents of Perry Township outside the city of Bloomington, we ask you to contact the Commissioner's Office directly for more information and to apply. Anything else for the good of the order?
Yes, may I?
Please.
On September the 5th, the week from tomorrow, at Monroe Convention Center, the Substance Use Awareness Commission here in Monroe County is holding a recovery summit to talk about issues related to, for things that go on for people in recovery. It's a big, big issue. We'll be, having an international speaker who works on summit and mental health issues be speaking. Our own state Senator Shelley Yoder will be there as well as panels of different individuals either in recovery or who are involved with medically assisted treatment and other issues along with that. If you're interested, you can go to the county's website and find information on how to get registered. Also, on Friday, September 20th, here on the courthouse lawn, we will have Paint the Town Purple. This, again, is another thing to celebrate people in recovery. It's free, open to the public. We will have probably some snacks, some games, and it's just an annual celebration. And I think this is the eighth year that we will be doing this, which is quite something. But again, join us on, at 5:00 here at the Courthouse Square on September 20th if you can.
Great. Thank you so much. Thanks for working on all those things, too. I know that that's a lot of, a lot of time and energy you've dedicated, so we appreciate that.
Our health department and others have also been fabulous to work with.
Absolutely, yeah, amazing. Did you have anything else you wanted to add for announcements? Okay, we do not have a work session today, so our next meeting will be...
Fourth.
Fourth, yes. Wow, already September. It's just kind of shocking. Will be Wednesday, September 4th, right here in the Nat U Hill Room, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.